First on the agenda. Hearings, Massachusetts Department of Transportation filing an RDA. Is that you?
That's me.
Please come up and sit here with us.
Can I sit later?
Anywhere.
I just wanted to go.
Fine.
My name is Mike Clontz. I am a senior project engineer with the Mass DOT Highway Division in the fire tunnel. The project we have before you is basically a resurfing project from the Rehoboth Town Line to the Totten Town Line. We are going to be resurfacing Route 44. We're going to take one and three quarters inches off, putting one quarter inch inches back on. Hot mixed asphalt. We are upgrading guy rail where we need it. The guy rail right now in some areas is probably not compliant, so we have to upgrade that as well. The other, we're also doing tree trimming, which is necessary to really establish bigger zones for the roadway, so that if you happen to go off the highway, you have a chance to recover. And also, you know, we've seen a number increase come down over the past few years, and they block our roadway, they deal with falling percs along. So we're trying to reestablish by a measure of safety. The last issue is we will be rebuilding a couple of paved highways within the, on Route 44, within that state highway layout. Those paved highways have become clogged with settlements and what happened? People clean them out and reestablish them and put them in proper order. I imagine we're a negative determination for this work. Maybe we see negative three, but you know, that's a, which is certain that's easy to get.
You've got to stay in the boundaries of the...
We're going to stay within the boundaries of the state highway layout. Not going inside of that.
Going to start when, Mike?
Well, the project I was told this afternoon is scheduled to advertise, and we can have. So I would imagine we're probably going to start in the fall, maybe even spring of 2021.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Any more questions? Any questions I can put as an answer on May 8th?
I have none. I already asked mine. Charlie?
Paul Kim?
Jim? I'll move then, or maybe we should have public input. Okay, I move that we issue a negative determination.
Second.
All in favor? You're good.
Thank you very much. Then we should be out there helping the fall early, at least next spring, as I said.
All right, Mike, thank you. Mass Electric.
Okay. Okay.
Hey, put this down on the seat in front of you.
Do you all need the water slips?
Charlie?
Needs that.
So, for the record, my name is Mariana Menuzio with the County Bond, speaking on behalf of Mass Electric, going to be, um, next year. This RDA was for a proposed installation of a section of distribution line along Maplestown Road. And a portion of the work is considered exempt under the little button protection act. The work will occur between the Lopez recreational complex, which is kind of off to the side, and it'll go over to Oak Street over here. The work will include removal of about 20 trees. They're the little purple dots that you see in order to facilitate the installation. The trees are not in the wetland, they're along the oak shoulder, and they'll be cut flush with the ground. Pole 41 is over here in the buffer zone, will be replaced. And then 11 poles, 11 new poles will be installed in their little yellow dots throughout. The new poles will be directly embedded in the main hanging roadway. They will require an 18-inch diameter pole drilled to the depth of about 6 feet below surface grade for installation. The pole footings will be backfilled and the area will be restored in time. The work will be performed using equipment that's going to be parked on the roadway. The equipment will be on the roadway. Erosion control barriers will be installed between the work and the resource areas. So there's some bordering vegetated wetlands kind of along the side. So the erosion controls will be installed between the wetland and the work. And impacts will occur within the 100-foot buffer zone to the bordering vegetated wetlands, as well as riverfront area. There is a perennial stream that kind of goes out that way, so the riverfront areas can be turned into blue lines.
What are the green circles?
Green circles are the button flags. Sorry, there's a lot of circles on the side.
Okay, all right.
Any questions?
And the red is the tree removal.
Yeah, both purples.
Yeah, purple, okay.
So the red lines of the 25-foot and the green is the 100-foot buffer?
Now, what is bringing about the installation of these new poles? Is it the development, new development that is proposed? Or is it just that new services needed?
Just from what I noticed when I was out there, it looks like there's going to be some development coming in. It's not going to be my guess, but I don't know for sure. I'm just the button person.
Doesn't the power comes in from the other side now, does it? Are there poles there?
This pole 41 is existing, but the rest of these are quickly new. I'm kind of not sure what's the rest of the area.
Because, I mean, like, this is going up the recreational sign of Ball Field, right?
Yes, yes, it's on the side.
I believe the power comes in off from the Obus for, to feed that, so.
Okay, so must be kind of the connection.
They plan on repowering the recreational sign enough.
I would imagine the poles that are the cities, the houses that are kind of built on the south side of Nickel Street. And also the two on the other side.
Yeah, there's like a new house coming up right here, while it's out there. And it looks like there's a bunch of lots down this area.
Any more questions?
No.
I'll make a motion that we issue a negative determination.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, like, boy, that was easy, huh?
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Blue Wave solo wants to continue.
Blue Wave is a pass through extension.
TLC.
There won't be any air.
LLC. By hopes of intentional structure driveway. This is TLC.
Oh, he wouldn't fly it now, but that's okay. That's okay.
I'm confused.
You're confused?
Yeah. It says Lot 22, Matt 7 Horton Street.
Oh, no.
And then you've got Maple Swamp Road.
Mariana, Charlie? Gee, Loops?
She.
Oh, you have one before, and so.
I do. I'm looking for Bill.
You have a TLC on, right?
Yeah, we need to... Anything for the ad. Usually that's the duty for the ad, actually needs to be presented before the ad, with a gazette.
Okay, to Shire from my office, I thought was coordinating that with you. We haven't gotten information on payment, on how to pay it out. I said, should we have coordinated with you? I hadn't been told that we were given a price or who to contact to pay it.
Continue.
I'm sure that it don't need a man.
Okay, but I'm looking too at what Bill just said. This one here says Maple Swamp Road, and we have here that it's on Horton Street. The...
TLC.
That's in Horton Street.
That says Maple Swamp.
That's Maple Swamp Road, but the driveway is, this is almost at the Rehoboth Line.
Correct.
It's found here right now that Loops, the paint, from head, they proposed to build a house in that area. In covers of wetland that's on the west side.
Bill, on the TLC development.
44, this, this.
We won't be here until 8 o'clock. TLC won't be here till 8 o'clock, we're hearing right now, uh, Gee Loops construction.
Oh, we're on number five.
We're on number five.
There we go, okay. That is, okay, all right. Let's, um...
So which one has the payment issue? Is it this one? Which one has the payment issue for the app?
Well, we're hearing this, this here.
Okay.
And there should be a payment of the proof of payment for the gazette.
If we haven't been told what to pay or who to pay it to.
Call the gazette, and they'll give you a price.
Yeah, we can ask. And we've had a problem in the past with applicants that haven't paid, and we have a hell of a time trying to get restitution.
It's fine, we don't complain, we've just been trying to figure out who does it and who pays. We haven't been told to pay.
I'm sure that since we've started, it would be my suggestion to have them submit proof of payment, whether we finished, here we go.
Well, I think from what you wrote here, your driveway is less than the size for the fire department?
I'm not sure. Is it a 20-foot driveway?
What's proposed is 12.
12, that's a problem. Our local fire department requires driveways that are over 150 feet long to be 20-foot wide.
You can do that, there is no grain, and it's completely flat, and there's no curbing proposed, so there'd be...
Now, okay, is this, is this not bad?
It's not great, if there's no fill for the driveway, it's that great, and there's no curbing, so.
Well, it's not bad, it's just that the ambulance and fire apparatus, they need turnaround.
They need a turnaround at the drive, at the house.
Two vehicles, you know, with twice.
Where, over here, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it would be several ways to have a vehicle turn around at the...
You want to go to the fire department for that, to get the full information on that, whatever. But that affects us, because if you're in the buffer zone, it means more square footage. Or if you're going through wetlands, that's more replication.
Yeah, there's no wetland disturbance right now.
Okay, but, but you're, okay, right now, but that's what we want to see, so we're going to have to continue it anyway.
Okay.
And if you do, when you expand the driveway, go in that direction as opposed to that direction.
This is already being proposed as an easement into the next lot, an access easement, so that we're not disturbing the 25-foot no-touch.
Right.
This is the lot liner right here.
That's a different lot, is it?
This is another buildable lot, that no works in the buffer zone. This is going to be an access easement for this lot, so that we're avoiding.
All right, so you're going to have to work on that then, because to stay out of the 25-foot no-touch zone... Well, they could do that easily, they'd come this way. Well, right, but they got to get the easement off of the other lot, because they're, they're, they're going through that lower lot. So they're, that's their problem.
That's an access easement that's being proposed with the planning board.
Okay, so, all right, so you're going to have to have a wider access driveway, and then you'll have to show us another map with the 20-foot drive and the turnaround near the, um, near the house. Well, actually, maybe not, because that, that might be outside of the 100-foot jurisdiction.
Yeah, the yellow is the 100-foot.
But you're going to need that anyway, because it's in the buffer zone part of the driveway. That part is, the whole thing's going to have to be widened by state and local fire laws. Okay? I don't know where it is, look, can you tell me where it is? I can't see that little corner map up there, and we don't have a map.
Okay, so this is Maple Swamp.
Right at the dang Rehoboth Line, off the Rehoboth side. Bill, you know, where the...
Cement place is?
Cement place, just east of the cement place. There's an open field.
On what side, north or south of Maple?
It's beyond the north side of Maple.
On the, on the same side as the cement, on the other side?
Dangly across from it.
Okay. Now I know where you are. Yeah, I know where it is too.
That land almost comes out the Route 44.
Yeah, it does, of course, it is on Route 44.
Look over and see it.
Okay, so you're going to have to redesign the map and get your access down with the other lot. And I guess to have that approved by, would you say, the zoning?
That's in our plan for next week.
Okay, but you're going to have to go in with a wider drive. So that's something you have to know.
Yeah.
So, but I would, so I would say, get in touch right away with the fire department to, to get all your figures down.
Do you need the radius of the ad?
For fire, yeah.
And the, the yellow line is 100-foot buffer?
This is 100-foot, this is the 25.
Okay, now, there's no stream in the property?
No.
Okay. That was the other lot that I was looking at. It has a stream, yeah.
It would be...
The one we thought you were.
Check with the fire department, the chief of fire department. He would give you all the information, but one other thing. Our local bylaw requires replication of a Buddhist even at the RDA.
Sure, yeah, I'll check with the...
300 feet.
So if that did not happen for tonight's meeting, we should do a continuing meeting?
It would be equally, because our next meeting, we would have to continue.
We'll need the receipts from the application. So we would handle the notification, could we, Bill? We would handle the notification, could we, Bill, and maybe improve what?
Yeah, you may do a replication, just because copies of the applications, just as, same as for the...
And just call the enter, call our gazette? For the legal end?
The ad is published, we just need to pay for it.
Yes.
We already published it, I, I continue a copy of the ad, I thought I did.
Yeah, you said it to Shire, but I guess nobody knew who'd pay, or that we weren't getting a bill for it.
You can, you can do it with credit card, and then just get an email receipt. Was this, was this the gas line?
Gas line down this way. This is the nut place.
Yeah.
Like you roll a five, if you, you have your copy of our local bylaw as well, and the law has to run into the notification.
Yeah, I have that.
Tower line.
Apologize, I have to do your, your...
Under the wetland act, there's no notification.
Yeah.
And when there is, it's 100 feet, powers 300. And RDA, for that, all reds. How can you handle that?
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
I make a motion, we continue.
Go, sir.
Second.
Continue, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you have any questions on this?
No, I'm all, I'm all, no, no, me go.
Public Kim point.
Okay.
That's mine, so hopefully you guys approve it. He, he's the, he's going to be the homeowner.
Oh, okay. So you know, you, you understand the width of the driveway and the fire department and all that? Yeah, we, you just need to get a better snowplow, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
What do we got next? Um, well, we're going to hold off, I guess, on the TLC development. They're not here yet, let's, we can go down to correspondence.
We gotta, we gotta make a motion about the tree. Can you, uh, Blue Wave 4?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'll...
I make a motion that we continue Blue Wave 4 from our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, go. Tremont Middle.
TLC called me and said it wouldn't be here till 8 o'clock. Where we're flying through these, we're going to be done.
Well, okay, you're going to, you're going to do what, minutes? I haven't had time to read them, Jim. Okay.
We do have, you pull down the list. We have certificate compliances requested by solo realty. I prepared the certificates. The properties are on Horton Street. 1792 and 1798, used to be one home, a strip shop. Now it's two homes. They try without condition, order conditions. Needs to get signed.
Okay, I move that we issue two orders of conditions, I'm sorry, two certificates of compliances for solo realty.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Ooh, what do we got? Somebody that wants to be a commissioner member? Kevin Bernardo. Hey, I think it's, it's great that someone wants to come in and... I do too. Where is he?
Couldn't make it, couldn't make it.
Couldn't show him. Now, does it, does this, does he have to be sworn in by the selectman, or? Oh, he appointed. Appointed by the selectman as a, as an associate number?
You have to approve it first.
Okay.
Guys, David, Kevin Bernardo, he's also in the board of health.
Can he do two? Yeah, why not? Can he hold two? Can he wear two hats? I'm on, uh...
He's completed courses with MAC to basic courses. That is part of his certificate on the back of this page.
While we are, okay. That's done. There you go. Interesting enough. Where's that?
Where's that? Gay and gay invoice. Gay and gay invoice.
We skipped over one, because we got this.
Oh, wait, let's, we're on Kevin Bernardo, that's number two.
We haven't discussed...
He's not here.
Walton.
Well, that's all right, we can still welcome him into, as an associate member. I mean, if he, if he's, if he's that thoughtful, that he's even taken courses already with MAC, I think that's a big plus.
They'll be coming before the...
When? Huh?
Can you ask my dismember? We're going to have to be capful on that.
Yeah.
2008.
2008?
That was when he...
It's a long time ago, you forgot that.
So have you.
No, I don't think so. It's still pretty soon.
Good. That's good. Okay. I'll make the motion that we accept Kevin Bernardo as an associate number.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Kevin. Good luck. Oh my God, $1,200. 13. Oh, you're looking at something else.
I thought that was a bill for...
No, that's a payroll account.
For the dollar. The bills are gay and gay.
And what is that for, Bill?
Huh?
What is that one for?
Charlie?
That was, that was the...
No, the 1,300.
It comes with 1,300 dollars.
What, what's a gay and gay at 1,300 for?
Probably a legal service and...
I thought we were just going to do that, a quick claim deed, that's all we did.
Bill, have we voted on this?
To people.
Yeah.
You have?
Yeah.
I didn't.
You missed.
Do you make the motion, please?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
That, that is disgusting.
I make the motion, doesn't get paid gay and gay for that services rented on...
With great reservations, I'll second it. I put my mental name in there too.
All in favor?
Quick claim deed, and walked across the street, registered the deed.
Right, just a little bit, one more, one more little thing to do, and we'll be out of here.
Tom's everything, Tom's cool.
Tom's cool more than that work and more than that money, and the work we've done, did you notice mine? Five knots flagpole.
Were you up or what?
No. You didn't? The house wrong we did.
Is that a basketball practice?
If you drive in to the turnaround, you just look off to the left. Tom put a 30-foot five-nose flagpole in. 15-foot five-nose flagpole in for a male perch. The nesting platform that I put on top of the thing was made out of leftover pieces of that... Decking material that I build the platforms with.
Okay, all right.
And, and it's covered with vinyl covered chain link fence.
And now, see, you go, having a... The vinyl post, as you said, I don't think any animal can climb up, because I have... I have a vinyl post.
It's not vinyl, it's fiber glass.
Okay, but I have a vinyl post in my backyard, squirrels used to, used to eat everything. They can't, they can't climb it, they can't put their feet around it, it kind of stinks. And I have not had a squirrel, I have not had a squirrel on my bird feeder in, in 10 years.
They got one over there.
What is it? What are you giving me?
I'm giving them a map for TLC Development.
Lot twenty-two. Off of Horton Street. I've been up to Horton Street today. Another driveway.
Yeah.
Half a mile long.
Okay, this is the one that, that was accessed earlier?
Yes.
Have you seen that area after a good rainstorm?
I have.
Have you seen about two hundred foot flow? Are you gonna build a, a Dyden Berkeley Bridge over there?
You're talking about the width of the flow through the, through the wetland.
Yeah.
Well, I know, I mean, I know where the tops, the banks.
All goes way, way over. There was, there was about a two hundred foot flow from, I mean, I'm talking about flow. So it went way, way over its bank.
I haven't witnessed that in there, but I mean, I've seen it, I've seen it flow pretty good. I've seen it above the bank.
So what I'm saying is I'm gonna be very concerned about the, your bridging, your crossing.
Well, we got a twenty-four foot box cover going in, Jim, so twenty-four foot pretty good.
Yeah, which is, I mean, we're, we're making a shooting cross in, it's on, on the, the cover we're providing and we had the, the, Brendan Finnoff actually delineated the extent of the bank. That was approved under the INRAD by this commission. So we have that established. We're at one point two times the width of the, the bank and the crossing, in the area of the crossing.
Okay. How big is this?
Twenty-four foot.
In, in.
Width.
Width.
Yeah.
So. Because I'll tell you, boy, that, I can, that flow, that flow must have been like this going through.
Problem is, the riverbed, as it shows, is the riverbed.
Yeah.
And the fact that it spreads out into that low level ground.
Yeah.
You're supposing a twenty-four foot cover and it meets all the DEP regulations.
That's correct.
Better than the pipes that we're running back from the previous.
Well, pipe, pipes would not, would not function. Would not function.
Twenty-four foot probably from here to the wall. Full story.
Yeah, I mean, here's, we have a detail, again, twenty-four feet wide.
How about if you got that map closer?
No, no, everybody.
No, even Charlie can see that.
On the bottom of my stall.
Jim, that box cover.
Twenty-four feet wide from end to end, and then it's gonna be in the bottom of the channel. The problem is the channel there is very shallow. It's only about a foot deep.
Right.
So it doesn't take much for the, for the water to overtop.
Overflow.
So, and, and we did a cul- a cover sizing calculation on this. It has been designed to pass a hundred year storm without overtop, overtopping the driveway.
Yeah.
I mean, you will get some ponding in the wetland. Of the water that's coming through there. I mean, that's what you have now. I mean, it's kind of what you're describing. It may not be ponded. I mean, it may all be passing, but, you know, now it's gonna be ponded and it's gonna be concentrated back to the channel. You know, if anything, this is gonna help out down gradient by, by kind of controlling the flow that, that's coming through there and channelizing it, getting it back into that channel.
Okay.
But again, we, we did, as part of the support documentation, we did provide a cover sizing calculation, which shows that the cover can pass at two, ten, twenty-five and, and one hundred year storms. I mean, again, there, there's gonna be a little bit of a backup behind the cover, but that's, that's pretty ordinary.
Okay, what, I got a couple of questions here. One is, what's gonna be up here?
House.
A house?
Yeah, and that's.
Okay, so how wide is your driveway?
The driveway is twenty, oh, let's see, we have the detail. So the driveway itself, we're gonna have a, a twenty foot wide improved area. We're gonna have sixteen feet of pavement with two foot shoulders, like a ground shoulder on the side. Which I'll help out with the drains, because I mean, you don't want all that water just stuck.
Well, no, I, I just want it so long as you're gonna, had the fire regulations coming.
Yeah, twenty feet wide. They need a twenty foot wide improvement.
That was my, okay, the next thing is through here with, with controlling flow and limiting it only to this area. Will, is that going to affect the wetlands downstream? In other words, will this area become less wet because in those truly torrential rain times, this will not get as much water, the water will be, will be.
Get the twenty-four foot of Jim.
Yeah, I, I know, but is that, is that going to also limit over here or is that?
No, I mean, that's gonna, it's gonna remain a border invigorated wetland.
Yeah.
Which, right now, the way you're describing it, is when that bank of the toxic no longer becomes border, I mean, it becomes part of the river, you know what I mean? So the characteristic of that wetland is gonna change over time if, if this situation continues. I mean, granted, it's for short periods of time, but now it's gonna become more of a traditional border invigorated wetland where it's gonna border on the stream. It's not gonna, water's gonna pass through there, you're gonna get runoff that comes through there, that goes to the stream, but it's not gonna be water. I mean, your traditional BBW isn't supplied by water from the channel working its way out, it's the other way around.
Larger mountain, even if it's ponded in the night, it acts as a dam. Once it gets through that twenty-four foot area, it's gonna spread right up again because the elevation's the same as it always was.
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna help channelize it. It, it's gonna, it's, it is gonna help that, but again, my, my point would be, the, the border invigorated wetland isn't sustained by water coming from the stream working its way out, it's the other way around. It's water coming from the uplands working its way through the stream. That's how it gets its source of water, that's how it sustains itself. Not from flooding of the, of the stream.
It shouldn't affect the wetlands at all.
It, it might, it might.
I'm just keeping you honest, checking you out, checking.
Glad somebody is.
Obviously, we're in here tonight. I brought a health pad and, and for some reason, it has to be six feet wide and two feet apart so we won't get the new, the coronavirus, coronavirus. And we're not shaking hands.
This is a new handshake right here, Charlie.
I'd like to set up, you get right into the thing here, I can key you.
Yeah, it's like, I'm in the arena here, it's very vicious, I feel like a gladiator.
Okay, two grand for here and there, you're not with a piss hole in the snow.
Okay. Okay, so up here, then there, there will be eventually a house, I, I assume, or is that gonna be?
No, it, um, we'll put it this way, any, any activity that goes back there that has work in the buffer zone will certainly be backed before the commission. Depending on what that is, we're not.
This is Loeb's property?
Correct.
So now, he has, okay, over here is Oak Street. Somewhere over here.
Yeah.
Oak Street, and he has farm animals somewhere over here.
Yeah, that's not, it's not a direct of water.
No.
There is the DI, DI Trust property that's in between here and, and that other piece that you're describing.
Ah, okay. Yeah, he's right here. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's not, it's not contiguous. There is a piece in between. But there is a nice chunk of uplands in the back there.
No, I, I've been there.
Yeah. So we're just looking to provide.
Okay, so how many square feet of?
All right, I filed for a limited, limited project. We're, we're looking to alter eleven, excuse me, eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet of, of wetlands. And replicating twelve thousand four hundred and ten up in this corner here.
Okay.
Which would be a, kind of a good spot for it. There's a stone wall that runs through here, so, you know, this will kind of, it'll kind of act as a limit of work with any activity up here. So just a mycological spot for the replication area. Because there is, over on this other side, I did notice that when Brendan Finnoff did do the, the INRAD, there's a potential ground pool, I guess, in this location. So we're trying not, you know, ideally, we probably would like to get the replication done in here, but we don't wanna do any work in, adjacent to that, so this was the next logical spot.
Okay. And you, and that'll be done at the same time as, as the, that you're gonna remove the wetland materials and?
That will be done first.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, this, this area will be excavated. That'll be the first step. I'll, you know, come in and take the wetland soils out here that, that looks out. Yep.
Would you explain to us how you exceed the five thousand square foot that they have in the wetland?
Yeah, all right, so this is something that recently I came across on another project at Seacott. I was always of the understanding that that was kind of the threshold.
That's, I think all of us.
That's just the way it was, just the way it was understood. However, on this other project, because I filed for a weapons crossing in Seacott, and it was, we proposed an alter, it's like four thousand five hundred square feet, and I, it was, you know, not, obviously not a bigger wetland as this, but it was a weapons crossing to access uplands to build a house. And when I filed, I filed as a limited project. And then I, I was told by the attorney from Seacott and also in a subsequent meeting with DEP that if you're below the five thousand square feet, it is not a limited project. See, they changed the regulation, I wanna say it was in the mid nineties. Prior to that, you could alter five thousand square feet. As long as you, as long as you replicate it, you didn't really need a reason. You could go, if it was to, to create uplands for a house, whatever, you could do that. Now, they, they, they changed the wording in the regulation where it's gotta be something that's required. They make you show, you gotta have a reason to fill. You just can't go in and fill five thousand. But that five thousand square foot number was a number that DEP came up with way back when, when they came up with the Weapons Protection Act that said, okay, you can alter up to this amount and there's gonna be no impact on the wetland as long as you replicate. And that was the number they held. Anything above that is where you get into the limited project. So if you're at four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet of alteration, it's not a limited project.
So just because it's a limited project, you can exceed the five thousand square feet?
Correct. That's still, in access, that's, that's the definition.
Do you have a file number? Is there a file number or?
Yes. That's the definition of an access limited project. Has to be five, over five thousand square feet of alteration. And, and at that point, you have to have, you need, obviously you need a reason to be altering that much wetlands. It could, you know, like, public infrastructure, I mean, in certain, there's a list of items, and one of them, one of the items is the, the access to an upland. If it's the only way to provide access from a public way to a usable upland, then it's allowed.
Okay.
What do we need?
No, I mean, it was, believe me, I.
Soon as you said eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty, I wrote it down.
Believe me, yeah.
Question mark behind it. I was gonna ask you about Charlie Eaton.
No, it was, that, that other project I'm working on at Seacott, it was a bit of a weapons education for me, just going back and forth, because what I always thought with the regulations, it turned out wasn't exactly.
True.
So, I mean, that's what, that's why we're here tonight, because, you know. And that's why, I mean, DEP would have issued the file number if there was, if it wasn't, remember, you know, they said, that, that's a red flag, and I know.
I didn't think he could exceed five thousand square feet.
Could you spell check him with DEP, make sure that it's, double check with DEP to just?
Or you think he just?
Wow, it's always good, since we never heard of it, and, like I say, we need to keep him honest.
Like I said, they, DEP, on my last, I don't know if you had a public file, but on my last like four or five notice and intent I filed, they've taken, it used to be within ten days you'd get a file. Now, the past couple, it's been three or four weeks. I mean, they really look through the application in a lot of detail. And I've had to do, like, they, they, I've had cases where they didn't issue a file number right away until I provided them some additional information that, that they asked for. So it's like, they're, they're taking a step, they're being proactive at the initial beginning, they're doing a thorough review. And then once they, once they're satisfied is when they issue the file number and hand over, obviously, to the local conservation commissions to, to act on.
I'm sure he's right, because when DEP gets applications with notice and intent, they go over the application, and if there's anything that, that's arrived, they notify the applicant, and we get a copy of the notification too.
That's why I asked if he had a file number.
But I mean, it's been five thousand square feet, five thousand square feet for ages.
Yeah, I know.
But, and it would be for a normal application.
What I'll do, Charlie, I'll email you the support documentation I have on that other case, so you can rethrow it, just give it time, like, you know, take a look at it and just, it, it's, believe me, again, it was kind of a.
That was right from the data portal of.
Yeah, I didn't even think we had one. I, I just, I was gonna continue the meeting, and then I, I was calling Charlie to continue, and he mentioned checking the ball, went on tonight and checked it, and sure enough, they had issued it. So typically, you will get an email.
The DEP would be saying, say, five thousand, ten, eleven thousand doesn't look like five thousand.
No, I was told, I, I had a meeting on that other one with a couple of agents from DEP, and I was told specifically, point blank, that a limited project has to be over five thousand square feet of alteration, which I never thought.
So it could be thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Whatever, whatever you need to do to get to where you're going. If there's no, if there's no alternative, if, if there's not an adjacent parcel. See, on that other one, what we were doing is, it was two lots owned by the same guy. If we were to build a driveway on one, it would have been a seven thousand square foot crossing, so we went across the other one to get back there. And again, we filed it as a limited crossing, they say, no, they said it wasn't because we were under the five thousand square foot. Even though if we had to construct it all on the other lot, it would have met the criteria. If you have an alternative, you gotta go with the alternative.
Okay.
And that's always been the case.
Okay, you said limited, so limited means one house or what is?
Limited means.
Action.
One crossing.
One crossing.
It, it doesn't mean one house, it could be, it could be a driveway, it could be a road, it could be.
Okay, and, and the other, and under five thousand is?
Same thing.
No, no, limited is.
Under, under five thousand is, it, it's, it's not a limited, it's just, it's allowed by right under.
For whatever reason.
Off the top of my head, but per the regulations. With the alternative, basically. Yeah, I mean, it, and again, that all changed, I wanna say it was the mid nineties. Because we used to have a guy, Rod Gaskell, who used to work in my office. He was, he worked at DEP when it first started in like the seventies, and he was part of writing the Weapons Protection Act. And I remember him telling me that that five thousand was by a wetland. Now, this goes back, you know, to the, to the mid nineties, when that was the regulation, but now.
Crossing the wetland to get to an upland, whether you give anything out there, raise corn, whatever.
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's, again, this, this qualifies as a limited project. It goes under the five thousand square feet, it would still be, it's not like because it's no longer qualifies as a limited project that you don't, like, you look at it differently. It's still viewed the same way.
Okay, so you, you get one crossing, but if you, but let's say if that was only forty-five hundred, you would still only get one crossing, you couldn't do, you couldn't do.
Yeah, you would be, no, because if you went over that five thousand square foot threshold, if you already had the one crossing, then they, they would say, that's it, you're done.
Yeah.
You know, you're using that one cross. You've already altered, you know, up to, up to your threshold. That's why I think that's.
So regardless of whether it's under five thousand or over five thousand, you get one crossing.
Yeah, and I think that's the difference. So like, it used to be, if you did two crossings, but the total was under five thousand, you could do two. Now, nowadays.
Okay, if it, they're both.
You can only do one regardless.
Okay.
You know, unless you actually have to, like, unless you, there's like a, the no common driveways allowed or something like that, and you had to do another. But once you get into this, above the five thousand, then it's, it technically is a limited project. It's a one-time deal for a driveway, road, whatever it is.
Okay. I have no other questions. Thank you for the info.
Like I said, Charlie, I'll pass it along. I have some good correspondence on that that I can, I can send you. Just so you, you have a huge reference, you know. No, but I mean, it's, it's good to, I mean, you, it's good to have, it's good to have the regulations that actually apply. Like I said, I used to know them off the top of my head, but it's been a little while.
It should be a better project than the previous. It certainly is a better project than the previous, uh, application.
Yeah.
The other one was just tear apart and don't do anything.
I mean, this one has walls, it's elevated, uh, it's built to stay. I don't have any problem.
And, and it's built, basically it follows the path of the existing cockpit, even though that's kind of aggravated, considered a wetland, it's, it's kind of a melted area for that cockpit, so. Even though, you know, you, you look at the number, technically we are altering that much, but a lot of it's already previously destroyed for the cockpit.
Replication ever would be constructed before the, uh-
It would, it would be excavated, uh, maybe not planted, you know?
After the load is constructed.
Yeah, because we, we would excavate that to, to make up for this and then start this and then take, you know, as, as they take the, the wetland soil out of here, place it in the replication area.
Now, you said that's gonna be paved?
Uh, sixteen feet of it, yes, correct.
Good.
Planting would never bother you.
I have no questions.
They've got other driveways that we could do that were sixteen foot painted and had shoulders.
Yeah, they're, they're, because I've dealt with that regulation, it's, it's a fire-
I have a problem with that, because I looked at the fire regulations. It's, it's supposed to be access roads, I don't think a driveway and access road-
I agree, yeah.
The same connotation.
Sometimes it's easy, you're just like, slide on to try to play the fire department, but, no, I agree, but I mean, I've dealt with it in, you, you see, some departments will look at it, and they want a twenty foot improved way, like twenty feet of pavement or whatever. Um, most departments will look at it, all they're looking for is enough width to get a fire in the back there, so it doesn't necessarily have to be twenty feet of pavement, they need a twenty foot cleared area minimum to get the trucks there.
Yeah, the, the regulation or the proposed, uh, regulation, because it's really not a regulation, it's a suggestion from a national fire organization.
Yeah.
And individual chiefs now are throwing it right onto it.
Yes. Yeah, I've dealt with that in a few different times.
But I, I read the whole damn thing and it definitely says access roads. This could be considered an access road.
It could be, so I mean, it, it, it makes sense from, from, uh-
But some of the projects we deal with, I mean, just people here just before you, if you have an idea, it's in Loeb's case here over on Maple Swamp Road. It's not twenty feet long, but it's two hundred feet or over two hundred feet long, it's not twenty feet wide here. Plus, they go onto another business property, they've got permission to build through an adjoining property.
I think, I, I don't know what the threshold is, but there's, there is a certain distance, once you get up beyond a certain distance. It's a hundred and fifty feet in the public?
That's what they, national laws.
Okay, yeah, so they're over that threshold. I need to buy a look in it up, because I knew we'd be over it on this one. It wasn't a question.
I'm done.
I'm set. I'm, I'm all set. Motion? Pay the motion, okay, from somebody.
I'll, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make Jim a jack there.
Senator Watson, make a motion. I want a word. Go ahead, I'm, um-
I'll make a motion that we issue, uh, order of conditions.
Set.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pulling teeth.
Better wait another, huh, kid?
Absolutely. Hey, hold on. I don't want the, I don't wanna pee before I figure this with this controversial project, you know? It's probably nobody showed up, you know, right, guys?
Oh, he did give you the, uh, the cards, right?
Yeah, the last.
Okay.
You got the green card, right?
Yeah.
I'm good, uh, are we, did we finish that already? You signed that thing from Gay and Gay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's your name to be, uh, to come and sell this tomorrow, I mean, you're, you're, yeah, come. Start one, one of these. Not, not this.
Good night.
Good night.
I don't want to, you can-
Okay, close the meeting? Okay, we all set? I'll make a motion to close the meeting?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey! We're done.
Eight twenty-eight.
Nice.